Twenty eighth, two thousand nineteen. This is where we do most of our heavy lifting. If you're turning in to listen to a lot of dialogue on the matters that are going to become before the board, we'll need to answer that phone first.
What phone are you?
All right, moving on. This is the meeting that you want to watch because this is where we get into the nitty gritty of the issues. Typically, when you get to one of our regular meetings, you won't see as much dialogue and discussion on the items as you will this evening. So if you'd like to follow along with us for this huge audience that we have tonight, if you would like to go outside and you find an agenda outside the door, you also find a blue slip if you'd like to address the board. Also, if you want to follow along our agenda and you're at home, you can tune in by going to our website, lavoniuschools.org, highlight over the Board tab, and you will see the agendas, and you can drop down and follow along with us. Our agenda is not real long tonight, but there will be some significant discussion on some of the items. So we'll start with our item one, Audience Communication. I do not have any blue slips, and I don't see anybody rushing to the table. So we'll move on to item two, Committee of the Whole. We only have one item tonight, and that is our discussion of the Board meeting calendar for our next school year. And Mrs. Oakley, good evening.
Thank you, President Johnson. Good evening. We've just passed around, and I believe you also received it in your packet, a copy of the suggested dates for the nineteen-twenty school year. And so we have listed here for your review, regular Board meetings, which, except where noted, would begin at seven P.M., our committee meetings, which would also, which would be held the week prior, for the most part, at six-thirty P.M., and then our study session workshops, our study sessions, at six-thirty P.M. And once we have made the final determination of the calendar, then I will work with President Johnson, and we'll identify dates for the workshops. So if you would take a look again at the calendar in front of you, we shared this in the packet last Thursday, and President Johnson and I have reviewed it, and we'd like to open it up to any discussion you may have about the dates we have listed. For the most part, it follows our pattern of bringing items to a study session, to a committee meeting, and then to a regular Board meeting.
And the only thing that I would add is you'll see our organizational and regular meeting are scheduled. We have it on here for July twenty-third, which is a Tuesday. I sent an email around giving the option either Tuesday or Wednesday, whichever might be more convenient for all of you, so consider that as well. Mrs. Burton?
I think that I heard that a couple of folks did have a conflict with the, a conflict with Tuesday, the twenty-third of July. Is that, is that the case?
There was at least one.
Okay. If we have already a known conflict on that date, I don't have any problem with moving it to Wednesday, the twenty-fourth.
Anybody else have a difficulty with Wednesday, the twenty-fourth?
No.
We're good with that? Okay. So we'll move the organization to the twenty-fourth.
And the corresponding committee meeting also?
Correct.
Okay.
What about the rest of the dates?
President Johnson?
Mrs. Burton?
This is not a reason to move the meeting, but just as an FYI, I am not going to be available on August twelfth. I'm not suggesting that we move it because there's not a convenient time to move it in that month, but just as, just as a, as an FYI, I have been set down that way.
All right, appreciate that. Thanks. Mrs. Butterfield?
So the study sessions will, do we usually put workshops on this calendar, or no? If we have a space for a workshop? I don't see one on here. I'm just asking if we made a conscious decision not to do that, or if we'll swap out a study session, or if they just didn't get on the calendar?
So once we have this complete, once the draft is finalized and we've completed it, then we'll go back and determine how many and where we'd like the workshops.
Perfect. Thank you.
Any other? Mrs. Bradford?
The calendar looks good to me.
Okay. Any other issues? Mrs. Frank?
Just a clarifying question. In the summer, or right around June, didn't we usually have, like, two committee meetings or something that count? So you fixed it somehow or something, so there's not two committee meetings, or?
We normally had two regular meetings-
Yes.
-and a committee meeting with no study session.
Yes.
We have found that to be challenging, not to have the study session be able to bring items prior to the committee meeting and the two regular meetings.
Yes.
And so what I talked to President Johnson about was to add a study session in May, where we had not had one, at least for the past couple of years. So we're going to add that, which would normally be, for instance, this evening, right? The day after Memorial Day. So that would be the May twenty-sixth, followed by a committee meeting. And that leaves us, we would move, we would still have one voting meeting in June, the June fifteenth meeting, for the budget, for any new hires-
Yes.
...for any potential layoffs, et cetera. We do have the option of June eighth out there, in the event we need to add either a voting item, or add another committee meeting, or a regular meeting. But we believe that with what we have going on next spring, we should be, it should suffice to have one voting meeting in June, but we did want to add-
Yeah.
...the study session in May. So same number of meetings-
Yes.
...but just the types of meetings. We'd recommend modifying a bit. That would give us some time to continue to dig into the budget, and answer some additional questions, review staffing, et cetera, prior to the committee meeting and the voting meeting.
I like this a lot better.
Okay, great.
Good.
That works. Thank you for doing that.
Anybody else? So we're all good with that one modification? Okay.
Sounds good.
We'll finalize. Thank you. Well, that was a difficult discussion. So I'm going to have to go to item three and turn it over to Mr. Centers.
All right. We have one item this evening under Building and Site. And the presenter is Ms. Allison Smith, and joining her is Mr. Harry Lau. And they're going to talk about the boiler replacements. So thank you for joining us.
Thank you, Mr. Centers. I'm very happy to bring this topic on behalf of Mr. Francis, who couldn't be here tonight. And I appreciate Mr. Lau being here, as I am not a technical expert in boilers, but Harry has accumulated quite the knowledge base over the years. So I'm happy to report that this is part of our ten-year facility plan that we've done, last, thoroughly done, I shouldn't say last, it was done by Plant Moran Cressa in partnership with them back in two thousand fifteen, and most recently updated in January of two thousand nineteen. And in that, we identified a need that our boilers throughout the district would need to be replaced. They're reaching the end of their useful life. They were done throughout the district in the mid-nineties. And again, now we're getting to the point where we need to look at replacing these. So it started off as a pilot project at Frost Middle School. It was a two-year pilot, and we are very pleased with the results that we've seen. So we want to share those with you tonight. And then we're seeking the Board's approval to do five more boiler replacements. The locations we're looking at are Holmes Middle School, Johnson Upper Elementary School, Hoover Elementary, Kennedy Elementary, and Hayes Elementary. We'll go over the bid results with you. The total cost for these five replacements would be eight-hundred-and-fifty-six thousand, and we're also seeking the Board's approval for a five percent contingency, just in case we need it. With that, I'd like to spend a little time going over, again, the bid results that we collected. We put this out to bid, and we're happy to get four companies that responded to the bid. The lowest was Systems Temp Corporation out of Rochester Hills, Michigan, and that bid, it also is the lowest bid, and that's who we're recommending going with. And the cost for that, again, is eight-hundred-and-fifty-six thousand. One of the perks of doing this project, you know, the main driver why we're taking a look at the boilers is because, again, these boilers are reaching the end of their useful life, and we don't want to wait for them to fail before replacing them. We know the inconvenience that causes to our buildings, so we're being proactive and aligning it with our ten-year facility plan, and also within the approved budget, sinking fund budget, that we have the funds and resources to do this project. One of the side benefits of doing this project is we also are anticipating some savings in our utilities, and also some energy rebates. So I'd like to share with you some of the utility savings and the rebates that we recognized from Frost Middle School through the cost of gas and electric over the two-year pilot. We recognized just under twelve thousand dollars of savings on utility cost. And we also recognized an energy rebate of just under twenty-two thousand. And I do want to make note, we aren't anticipating as large of an energy rebate, but again, the energy rebate and these savings in our utilities isn't the main driver for this cost. The main driver is that our boilers are reaching the end of their life. These are just a couple perks of doing these projects. So I will refer you to, we'll go to Phil's memo that was in the Board pack.
I believe it was left out.
Sorry, I should have brought it to you.
Yes, actually.
Thank you. And this goes into some detail about the award to Hamilton Engineering to provide the three VO high-efficiency hydronic boiler systems. And that is what's currently in place at Frost. And since we started this back at Frost in two thousand fifteen, there's been a few manufacturers that have come up with some kind of comparable, comparable boilers, but we still feel that Hamilton really is the best on the market. Harry's done a lot of research and reaching out to other districts that have tried some of their products, and we really feel like this would be the, has got the highest quality, kind of the lowest, I guess, problems that people run into. So it's for that reason that we're recommending going to this company. I'd also like to thank Harry for reaching out to Hamilton. As we know, we're not planning to replace all of the boilers across the district in this coming year, that this is going to be a project that's going to take a number of years. So Harry's reached out to Hamilton and asked if they would hold the pricing for the boilers, and they have agreed to that. They have put a stipulation in there that should their costs, their raw material costs go up, that there would be a way for them to, to adjust for that, which seems very reasonable. So they're saying nothing to exceed ten percent. So if their materials go up, that they would then have to pass that on to us, but otherwise, that they would stay firm with the pricing that we received from them, and they provided a quote as such, so.
So if, if either you or Mr. Lau could go into some detail about the stainless steel vessel and tubes, that was one of the most essential items as we took a look at the boiler replacement pilot. You may recall that that was one of the items that we took a look at versus the aluminum and the life expectancy of those, and the wear and tear. So Mr. Lau, could you go into a little detail as to why we're seeking the all-stainless-steel boiler vessel and tubing?
And water tube also. It's essential not to get into a fire tube. Water tube generally says that the fire is all around the tubes, the water's inside, so you're heating a smaller volume of material. Whereas in a fire tube, you're actually putting fire into the tube, and it causes a lot of sooting and problems of cleaning them, because there's no way to actually take those tubes out and replace. So that's why we went with the water tube. Generally, the stainless steel has a natural cleaning effect, because it's more on the acid side of things. So as long as your water's staying in the right pH, it helps clean itself. It doesn't calcify inside the tubes. And that's what drove us to this point. With that being said, and going with the Hamilton, it was first on the market, it was a European boiler, and then they had some financial difficulties, and Armstrong Steam, which is in Three Rivers, Michigan, actually bought the rights to manufacture that boiler. So it's made here in Michigan. Generally, nobody up to the last couple of years had solid stainless steel, and the ones that did were going with a lesser grade, the four thirty-nine stainless, where these are three sixteen L. So they're a little bit more beefy and a little bit more durable. Thirty years in these boilers should be no problem whatsoever, as long as we keep our water in balance, in which we've been doing a very good job of.
You know, one question I had asked Harry, too, if the Board is interested, or folks at home, of why we selected the five buildings that we have for this project?
So these are all sister schools. Holmes and Johnson are sister schools to Frost, and Kennedy and Hoover are sister schools also. They're identical. Hayes was thrown in there because it's performing poorly. So it's, if, we believe that if there's going to be a failure, it's going to be at Hayes, so that's why we put it on the stock here. But it was mainly driven by same kind of school, same kind of footprint, so we can take and be sure, even test our, our data again at these buildings.
All right. Any questions?
Could you speak to the replacement, that we're not doing a one-to-one replacement for the boilers as well?
So what we did is by measuring the temperature of the loop, by the volume that is being pumped through our pipes, and how we can turn down these boilers, like five to one. So we can take our loop from, on all boilers that we have currently have to run at a hundred and forty-one, or they condensate and destroy the insides. So these, we can turn it down and run it in between a hundred and a hundred and thirty, and still capture heat out of the loop through the coils, and satisfy our occupied spaces.
So speaking of that, you know, it's one of the questions that they've looked at, that it looks like they went in kind of heavy when they did it in the nineties, and really put in probably more than maybe what the buildings were needed. So when we were looking to replace them, we wanted to put in what we needed, and to be assured that what we did put in would suffice and given off enough, you know, heat for the building. So again, they've spent a lot of time researching this, and so they are able to go down in the number of boilers at each building, but yet, you know, be, we can be assured that it's going to have enough energy and enough BTUs that-
BTUs. We can cut down BTUs to a quarter, a half to a quarter in most cases. Where we might have twenty-four thousand at Churchill, we're pretty confident we can go down to at least twelve, if not even eight, eight million BTUs. So it's an automatic savings by not running other equipment.
Mrs. Frank?
Thank you. You said this is a ten-year plan. We're replacing five elementary, or five schools. Will we be doing the same next year? Like, will we be coming back with five more buildings next year, or will it be two years? How, what's the cycle going to be?
I have put together a draft schedule, which Phil and Andrea and I are still discussing, considering the, the cost of metals. Maybe we want to take the bigger boiler plants and do them a little bit more expediently, so we can capture some of the savings by doing them more quickly.
Okay.
So we're going to take a look. We have a plan that I believe, actually, within seven years, would be able to complete the project. But again, as Mr. Lau said, we may modify that just a bit based on material costs and the number that are needed at, for instance, the high school plants. And so we're going to take a look at that again this summer. We have a little bit of time. We also want to take a look at, obviously, the condition and the need, where those have critical needs, just like we have with our roofs, and, and parking lots, and other, and other key areas. So we have all of that information, and just like Hayes was added on the list this year, based on a need basis, we'll look at both financial efficiency, as well as the need and the condition of the boilers.
Also, to add on to this, I know we're all aware of this, but for anybody watching at home, this plan, too, is contingent on, you know, continued funding through our sinking fund. Our current sinking fund is set to expire in two thousand nineteen, so we'll be very eager to see what happens on August sixth, so.
Mrs. Butterfield?
Superintendent Oakley, this is sort of our first, we talk a lot about roofs and parking lots, and the need to replace those outside of the bond. So this is sort of our first foray into something that's internal to the buildings. And from a public perspective, I think, you know, we see these buildings, they're very nice, and we say, well, why are we replacing the boilers already? And could we just talk maybe just a minute about that, since we're starting this cycle now-
Sure.
...about why the sinking fund, and the bond, and some other items like that?
Sure. Well, the sinking fund is, has been allowing us to address items that were not planned to be covered as part of the bond. And so as the Board at the time of the bond took a look at the needs that existed, they, not only the, the needs of the schools far exceeded the dollar amount that they felt comfortable bringing to our voters, but additionally, there were items that had traditionally been part of our sinking fund expenditures. And so our community has supported the sinking fund for the past twenty-five years, and generally, we have had expenses fall within those, within those funds with regard to the repair and upkeep of our school facilities themselves, in items such as, again, the roofs, the parking lots, the lots and grounds, so the playgrounds, the athletic fields, et cetera, water mains, all of those types of facility needs that arise both planned, which are the, the kind we prefer. I think Mr. Lau would, would agree with that. Both are planned expenditures, as well as when we have a significant water main issue or other, for instance, roof issue that was not part of the planned cycle. That's where the sinking fund really allows us to be able to address those needs without dipping into the general fund, which is utilized dollars for the classroom.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Anything else? Okay. Thank you both.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes Building and Site.
Oh, I do want to apologize for the phone ringing. That was really, that was really, he was cutting the air, so Frank.
Oh, very good.
Such a hard worker.
We're voting on this at our next meeting, correct?
Yes.
Yes, please.
That ends Building and Site, Mr. Centers?
Yes.
That could be a record. Well, with Mr. Francis not here, that helps.
Right.
So we'll move on to item four, our Curriculum Committee, and I'll turn it over to Mrs. Jarvis.
Thank you, President Johnson. We'd like to start tonight with the MHSAA Membership Renewal with Mr. Willenborg.
Thank you, Mrs. Jarvis. Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
My topic is the annual renewal of our membership within the Michigan High School Athletic Association. Each of our middle and high schools have been longtime members of the Michigan High School Athletic Association. Membership is a voluntary consideration, but if our schools wish to participate in postseason MHSAA tournaments, we must approve and submit an annual membership resolution. A copy of the resolution is in your packets. Our membership resolution requires Board of Education approval, and it stipulates that our district and our schools have adopted the Michigan High School Athletic Association rules as our own. We essentially become signees to their constitution and the governing bylaws, and agree to, you know, play the role of enforcers of their rules. We incur responsibilities to educate our community about the Michigan High School Athletic Association rules and procedures, to monitor compliance within our programs, to investigate violations, and to administer penalties. I respectfully request your continued support of our membership in the Michigan High School Athletic Association, and ask that this item be added to the consent agenda for the next regular Board of Education meeting.
Are there any questions or comments?
We're okay with consent?
Yes.
Yes, we are.
Generally, we consent.
All right, then we can move on to the next item, also with Mr. Willenborg, which is computers for the Livonia Career and Technical Center.
Yes, and ongoing concern is, is our upgrade of technology assets at the Livonia Career Tech Center. Board of Education members may recall the somewhat recent computer purchases we have made that allowed for significant upgrades in our engineering design course and the graphic arts course. This request this evening is for purchase, is targeting our computer repair and security course and the Internet Engineering course, whose classroom computers for student use are now over five years old. Mr. Anderson and the staff of the Career Center worked diligently to ensure LCTC programs match college-level technologies and utilize industry standard practices. This request is for twenty-seven HP Hewlett Packard single-unit computers and the HP Care Pack that provides hardware support and accidental breakage coverage. This product was reviewed through Ramsey Pricing, and CDW, she was a selected provider. The total cost, we told, was fifty-nine thousand nine hundred and thirteen dollars. The funding source for this purchase will be from the sixty-one A, or added cost allocation provided by the State of Michigan, which means that the purchase will be fully funded outside of the LPS budget. I requested this item be placed on the agenda of our next regular Board of Education meeting.
Are there any questions or comments? Mrs. Burton?
Mr. Willenborg, just for the benefit of our folks who may be listening at home, the sixty-one A added cost, now that is a grant from the State of Michigan, and it must be utilized, if I'm, if I'm not mistaken, it must be utilized for our Career Technical Center-type programs, and for some of the extra equipment that must be utilized in that kind of a program.
Yes, those programs tend to be very expensive, so, programs, and yes, it's a, it's a grant that allows those programs some funds to, to operate.
And limited, and limited only to those programs.
Right. So we cannot use, utilize that for salaries or textbooks, things like that. It's got to be in-
Or even computers at other, or other schools.
Yes. All right. Great. Thank you very much.
Any other questions or comments? All right.
It's mostly for hardware. This is for the hardware. Mr. Anderson will purchase some of the software that goes for these programs on a separate, under his building codes.
Great.
Okay.
All right.
Is it on the agenda?
Yes, it is on the agenda, please. Thank you, Mr. Willenborg.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And now we will consider the recommendation to purchase world-language Level Two textbooks with Mrs. O'Brien.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. I have brought Mr. Matt Miega with me this evening, our World Language Teacher Leader. He has been working throughout this school year with a team of world-language teachers to evaluate our Level Two world-language curriculum, to research best practices, and create a vision for teaching and learning for our students. They looked at the new materials that we adopted last year for Level One, and their job was to select the best choices with the funds that we have allocated for these materials. Tonight, we're bringing a recommendation to continue with the same programs that we purchased for Level One. So our committee, that Matt led, ten teachers representing all three high schools and two of our middle schools, they reviewed what research they did last year, current best practices for world-language acquisition, and utilized the same needs assessment summary for their Level One textbooks. Lastly, they talked to the teachers who are currently using the Level One textbooks, and gained their insights for what has been working, and valued their experiences and their, that they've been having this year with the students to help determine their recommendation. So the committee has determined that the best situation would be when they would use the same publisher for Level One and Level Two. So they felt that the concepts would flow coherently, and there would be less anticipated gaps in the content. So this evening, for Level Two German, we are recommending Portfolio Deutsch. It was published in two thousand fifteen. The total cost for this textbook purchase would be twenty-five thousand eight hundred and thirty-three dollars seventy-eight cents. This would include student books, an eight-year online license, teacher support and assessment materials, and online access for teachers. For Level Two French, we are recommending Te Brache. It was published this past year, and our Level One students are using the two thousand nineteen version. This textbook offers the Passport Program, which allows students to communicate immediately in the targeted language. It immerses students in culture and content, and engages them in language-learning processes. This has been noted as a strength for this year's Level One instruction, and they would like to continue that as a part of the Level Two French. The total cost for this textbook purchase would come to fifty-four thousand four hundred thirty-six dollars and twenty-five cents. It also includes student books, an eight-year online, online license for textbook access to the Passport Pro, so, slow down, eight-year online license to the textbook- pro, so, slow down. Eight-year online license to the textbook and the Passport component. The teacher support materials are complimentary, and we are also purchasing 50 additional Level 1 books, so that teachers may complete this first year, the full Level 1 textbook, at the beginning of Level 2 next year. So, they want to make sure that they cover all the concepts, and they have not finished. Sometimes that happens with a textbook when we're new to it. And then we'll review next year how we would spread out that Level 1, Level 2, moving forward. So, we want to make sure that our teachers can complete the Level 1 concepts at the beginning of next year, and then use the Level 2 books in Level 2 French. And then, lastly, for Level 2 Spanish, we are recommending Authentic, which was published in 2018 by Pearson. The total cost for the Authentic purchase would come to $50,698.74. This also has an eight-year license, includes student books, teacher editions, and resource workbooks. The teacher support materials in the online license is complimentary. So, the total cost for our world-language textbook recommendation is $130,988.77, with $49,897.24 in complimentary materials. This money has been budgeted in our secondary textbook budget, which has been supported by the Wayne County Enhancement Village money. We would be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions or comments? Please ask them in the appropriate language.
Last time you were here, I think she gave your credentials of how many languages you speak, and Tracy forgot to give us your HES credentials. How many do you speak?
I know Spanish well. I can do bits and pieces of French.
That's fantastic. I do have a question. Can I, I do have a real.
We rely on Matt's leadership a lot.
That's fantastic.
And he does a fabulous job.
Thank you for that. Thank you. So, in the French, that they're not completing the first year, are they, they are completing it in German and Spanish?
So, what, the way everything was able to work out, German, the German book that we are recommending actually is the Level 1 book, but it, there's so much in it, so what we're looking, they're doing, they were able to split it directly in half.
Okay.
So, it'd be the same book for Level 1 and Level 2, but they basically would be able to complete the entire book over the two, the two years of using the textbook in German one. When French went to look at theirs, based on what they were able to cover this year, and do a proficient job at enabling student success, they weren't able to finish that book. And sometimes, in the past, what we've done is just skipped that. But then they looked at that material, and there was just going to be a huge hole, even if they went with a different textbook, that they really wanted to cover the entire Level 1 book, and then jump into the Level 2 book. And the French teachers did an amazing job at sort of playing with some of the layout of the curriculum, so that they would be able to be in the 2 book, but just sort of jump back and forth between the 1 book. We're hoping that we would be able to have at least a class set, so that students would be able to refer back to it. One of the nice things with the online material is that the teachers are able to also give the students an online version of the Level 1 book and the Level 2 book as well. And then, Spanish, the publisher actually, essentially, what we, last year we adopted was half of the Level 1 book, but they have a version that's called A and B. So, this year, we're recommending the B book, but essentially, all three languages have taken what in some areas of the country might be a Level 1 text.
Okay.
That would fly through it, and it would be superficial. Instead of giving students the chance to feel of success, experience a language, be able to dive deeper into the materials, especially a lot of the complimentary materials that we receive, and explore the culture, which is one of the highlights with many of the students, instead of just, here's a group of vocab, throw it at you, let's hope it catches on to you, here's some grammar, throw it at you, catch on and keep moving.
Right, right. And they're still going to be prepared for college level, even if they only take those two years, and they're through the first book technically?
Yes, because many of those first-year textbooks cover a wide range of topics that even get them all the way up to introducing the past tense. When you look at what we're currently doing with what this new curriculum is, at least concept-wise, there isn't that much of a difference. There might be some thematic differences, and, but they'll also have that time now to be able to dive into some deeper issues, or cultural concepts that would allow the students to experience the language.
Okay.
Awesome. Thank you.
Any other, Mrs. Burton?
This is a question that I ask for the benefit, at this point, of the public, because our group here has discussed it many times. But whenever we're purchasing textbooks, it's my understanding that if we purchase the online books, we'll get the hard copy for free, or vice versa. But folks in our community frequently ask, why don't we just go to all online? We don't have that option of, as, doing it as a cost-saving measure. Can you address that for us?
Of course. Not that I'm aware of. In fact, working with the Spanish textbook, we're getting those completely complimentary free, so really, we're paying for the textbooks no matter what, and they're just giving those as free. The other ones, it is sort of like a bundle, but there's not much, if any, of a price differential that I'm aware of. And in fact, we do, having talked with some of our students, they do still like, I know it may not seem like it in 2019, but they do like having a book in their hand, especially with all the new research that's coming out about what reading digitally and what reading in print looks like, so.
Okay, okay, good. And I like having both options, especially since we're going to be offered both options anyway. We may as well take both options, and let students utilize whichever way is working best for them.
Yep. And it also offers them, if they forget their book at school, they have that option to be able to jump on it online, or if something happens. We've had, at least in my classrooms, some students who've been absent for whatever reason, and I can always say, here, here's where we're sort of at online. Feel free to jump in and do as much of it as you can, or at least sort of be on the same page as what we're doing in the classrooms. And I'm sure all the rest of our language teachers are doing that in the district as well.
And then after your year of utilizing, the first year of Year 1 texts, and what you know of our teachers across the district, can you, what feedback can you give us about the Year 1 texts that we purchased?
Things are going well. I think a lot of the teachers are excited to have, had the support from the board to get those new materials in their hand. Of course, with anything new, there's a learning curve that goes on, and I think even myself, where you sort of experience what it is that could be done, and then you start dreaming and saying, oh, I wish I would have done that, so make a note of it for next year. But as far as I know, all the teachers love and adore everything that they have. They're excited to finally get rid of some, some of our old textbooks. I think some of the new media they talked about was the revolutionary CD-ROM, and I think even some of them had records as a vocab word. So, I think some of the teachers are very excited to actually have cell phones mentioned in the textbooks, and updated, you know, pictures and all those materials that go along with it. So, I, as far as I know, everyone is thoroughly excited to be having the new materials and have the support from the board and the district and the community to continue to grow our programs.
And the community is exactly right, as was mentioned that, by Mrs. O'Brien, that this is largely due to the passage of the Wayne County Enhancement Village. This is our community supporting purchases like this, that we could not perhaps have otherwise made, or couldn't have done it in such a timely manner. So, thank you so much to our community for funding this project.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Mrs. O'Brien and Mr. Miega.
Thank you.
Liz, we're going to vote on this on the third.
Yes, please. And finally, the recommendation to purchase flexible furniture for Cleveland Elementary. Is that Mrs. Scott?
Sorry.
And here she is.
This moment of silence brought to you by.
Here she comes.
We are going to.
No, we're moving along.
We'll just look at the pictures. No problem. We have pictures to look at.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So, tonight, we have our last elementary school to go through this year. Next year, we'll have one school, one more school to go through, but this will be our last one this year. So, it is with great pleasure that I bring forward a proposal for flexible furniture for Cleveland Elementary School. And again, this is a Phase 3 item targeted for elementary furniture, and it's also using the 2013 bond funds, which utilizes the National Intergovernmental Purchasing Alliance Discount Program. So, Cleveland formed a school committee, gathered input from the staff, and worked with Interior Environments this time to create a flexible furniture plan, to enhance learning spaces, and provide some different seating for the students. So, we can look in the pictures that's provided for you. And the first one, they're going to make a collaboration area space close to the lunchroom area. So, you can see, it looks really fun, you know, for the kids to be able to go in there and be able to utilize that space. But I really like the second page, because it kind of shows a kind of an up-close picture of the different areas. I like that first table up there, because of course, you know, we've seen that before, able to fold it, so they can push it aside, and be able to, you know, have larger groups. Some different types of seating, and being able to even move them around, and form different variations. So, the low tables, something similar to what some of the classrooms have right now. And then, the library, there's a little area back over there, where they bring some students to work with some interventions. So, they have a little area there. And then, the very last page is the bench-type seating that we have found that some of the schools are really tended to like, to be able to have some supplies underneath, and be able to put that in nice little tucked-away places, hallways, et cetera. So, nice variations. The total purchase price is $38,742.11, and I'm requesting that this proposal be placed on the agenda for the May 23 regular meeting. So, any questions?
Mrs. Burton?
I don't remember many of our other elementary schools requesting hallway benches, other than like maybe in the front lobby or something. Can you tell us how you utilize those, or a little bit more about that?
Some of the, some of the schools have been putting some of those benches into the hallway. Sometimes students, you know, like to go outside and, you know, work on something, or they're working with an adult, to be able to, you know, have a place to sit, instead of at a desk and a chair. And I was at one school that didn't have this, but now they're probably, they will be getting it. You know, like the students, you know, sitting out there and working on something together, you know, so it just kind of gives them a nice formal place to be able to do that.
Okay, great. Thank you.
I think it's really nice to have the supplies tucked underneath, rather than, you know, a couple of books, crayons, whatever it happens to be. It's kind of nice to be able to have that.
Mrs. Frank?
I was just at one of our schools last week, and two kids were working on a project. They had their paper in between them, and they were laying on the floor in the middle of the hallway. So, I think that it's great to have benches for them in some of the schools.
And I'm sure they'll still use the floor. I mean, I'm a floor person. I like the floor, too, so, but there will be that option.
I just love seeing the diversity of our schools. There is not a school, I don't think, that picked the same materials, and just the different ideas, and the creative ways that they're utilizing these funds. It's really neat to see the staff working together, and these balance boards. There's just some different things, that even though they're last, they didn't just take what other schools have done. So, I think it's really exciting to see the personalities of the schools come out a little bit. So, that's really neat.
I think, again, what's nice is having that variety of either, you know, tall seating, or short seating, or on the floor, or whatever it happens to be, or standard table. It's just nice to be able to see the variety.
Yeah.
There's some really unique pieces.
I know. And very colorful, you know? I like the color. I love the color.
Yep. Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Mrs. Jarvis. You know, it's one thing for us to sit at this table and see pictures, and say, yeah, we'll approve that. And it's something totally different when you actually get into the schools, and you start seeing how the, this flexible furniture's being used. I mean, a great example, we were at Churchill today, in the, in the community room. And what a wonderful room that is. And our understanding is, they just, they fall over one another to try and get in there and use it.
Yeah.
And to be able to go in and actually see the furniture that's going in, that we see in the books, actually in use, I think that's really outstanding. And it's, what goes to show is that we're doing something right.
Yes.
Well, and I think it's kind of bringing us, like, up-to-date, you know, in the respect of, you know, like, they're used to going out into social, and out to our communities, and being able to choose different types of seating. If you go to a coffee shop, then you have different places, and, not that our elementary children, maybe they are, but, you know, it's just nice to be able to see that they do have the options to be able to do that.
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments? Then we can put this on the agenda as well.
Okay.
Thank you, Mrs. Scott.
Thank you.
President Johnson, that concludes the Curriculum Committee report.
Thank you, Mrs. Jarvis. And that will move us on to our Legislative Committee, item 5, and Mrs. Bradford.
Thank you, President Johnson. Tonight, we are going to have an update on the legislative, with some legislative information from Superintendent Oakley.
Thank you. I will be relatively brief, but I wanted to just give you an update on a couple of pieces. As you know, we continue to watch the budget recommendations closely out of Lansing. As you know, we've received the Governor's Budget Proposal. We've received a proposal on the school aid budget from the Senate. We still have not seen anything come from the House of Representatives. That is highly unusual for this point in the year. In this week, a great deal of our legislators are focused on the Mackinac Policy Conference hosted by the Detroit Regional Chamber, and so, we do not anticipate that coming out this week. As you know, that's forced districts to really take a look at making projections for next year with regard to per-pupil funding, or any other type of funding based on the Tenants of the School Finance Research Collaborative, a bit tentative. And so, we will continue, we're continuing to prepare the budget for you to review on June 10. But I did want to let you know, as I've continued to share with you in the update, that we're awaiting that third leg of the school stool to be able to take a look, at least at all three. We do not anticipate that we will receive a final school aid budget from the Legislature by the time we pass a budget, nor by the time our fiscal year ends. And so, what we will do is take a look at all three of the proposals, and then do our very best to work with our colleagues across the state, as well as via MSBO, with regard to a responsible projection for per-pupil funding for this coming year. I wanted to share with you that Friday's Consensus Revenue Estimating Conference was a bit of a mixed bag with regard to the General Fund and the school aid budget. State revenues came in relatively flat, but there were some concerns that it could have been even worse. So, the numbers for fiscal year 2019 showed General Fund revenues coming in about 150 to the good, compared to what was expected in January. However, the school aid fund numbers were coming in just over $68 million less. And then, projections are showing that the school aid revenues that would be coming in fiscal year '20 and '21, each are in the neighborhood of the mid-80 million, about 86 million less for 2020, and about 84 million less for 2021. And so, while overall, the economy may be reviewed, may be viewed as relatively stable moving forward, this is, it is very, very important that we continue our focus on the school aid funding, and the advocacy that we've had with regard to the weighted formulas for the, not only the per-pupil funding, but the weighted formulas as referenced in the School Finance Research Collaborative, and that we continue to take a look at removing the university funding from the K-12 school aid budget. Those are two essential components that will continue our advocacy on those items. We encourage our community to do the same. We have contact information for our legislators, always available on our website under the Community tab, right off of the front of our website. And so, advocacy on that front really never sleeps, and so, we wanted to just bring you an update, as we continue to prepare the budget for your review in June. Just a brief update on where they are in Lansing. As you know, I think we've probably all seen the focus on the auto insurance reform, really, I think diverted the focus a bit from the budget. And hopefully, once we, once the policy conference is wrapped up, they'll be back focused on the budget, and we'll be able to move forward and have a better idea of the final numbers coming through the school aid budget.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions or comments? Mrs. Burton?
Just also, if folks are inclined to contact their legislators, it is very significant when we are required to have a budget by June 30, and yet, we don't know what monies the state is going to be allotting to us until potentially October. It completely ties our hands. It completely ties our hands. We've got to then go with the most conservative so that we don't hamstring ourselves in committing ourselves to dollars that we don't have yet. So if one is inclined to contact our legislators, absolutely, getting it right is most important, but getting it timely is very, very important to our ability to then utilize those dollars for our students in the school year in which they're allotted.
Yes.
So I would encourage folks to absolutely get it, encourage our legislators to get it right, but also to be prompt.
Mm-hmm.
If we're gonna be held to a June 30th deadline, we have to know what we've got before we can really responsibly do a budget.
Thank you. Mrs. Frank?
I think sometimes as parents, as community members, the budget, what does the budget matter to, to me, to us, the school budget? And I think really talking about what it matters, why it matters, is because it matters how many teachers we can hire, how many, how many kids are gonna be in a class, because can we, based on the budget that the state gives us, can we add a section, can we, do we have the ability in the funds to, to provide an extra class in that room? So providing kindergarten teachers, or kindergarten parents with their teacher information, where they're gonna be going to school, are we gonna have to transfer, that sort of thing, those are very important things that parents want to know, but that is directly a result of what numbers we have for the budget in a timely manner. So it does affect each one of our students, it's not just numbers to make our numbers look good, but it's what it can do for us as a district. And so I think that that's very important when we're asking you to contact our legislators, it's not just for us to have numbers, it's for us to be able to plan specifically what we can provide for the students, so it has a direct impact on the classrooms and the teachers in terms of what we can provide for them, because we don't know if we don't have the numbers, what we can provide.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions?
I'll just remind folks that as we talk about where to advocate and in being, getting more information, in addition to the information about our upcoming village proposals, on the front page of our website, there's another large link that is entitled "The School Finance Research Collaborative." I know we've referred to that before, but included in that is about a two-and-a-half to three-minute video that is very informative, and then a link to FundMySchools.org, which gives a great deal of information about the bipartisan effort from business leaders, community leaders, education leaders across the state that participated in perhaps the most comprehensive research study that's been completed across our country with regard to how much it truly costs to educate a child. And so, again, I encourage our staff, our community, our parents, if they've not had an opportunity to review that information, it really is important information, and it's laid out in a very easy-to-understand format.
Thank you. Okay, if there aren't any more questions or comments, that concludes the Legislative Committee.
Thank you, Mrs. Bradford.
You're welcome.
That'll move us to Item 6, our Finance Committee, Mrs. Bonnefield.
I have nothing. Superintendent Oquist?
We do not. We will be busy with you on June 10th, bringing the budget recommendations, and we're looking forward to that, but nothing for tonight.
Thank you. That concludes finance, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Bonnefield. That'll take us to Item 7, our Policy Committee, Mrs. Burton.
We have nothing for this evening, thank you.
Wow, nothing in policy. That'll take us to Item 8, our Personnel Committee, Mrs. Frank.
We have nothing.
We do not.
We have nothing, wow. We are at the end of our agenda, land speed record today, folks, thank you. Since we are at the agenda and nothing more to be brought, then we will see you the next time, thank you.